School Dixie Lamban, as well as a saxophone quartet at six forty-five.
Okay.
Good.
Start, yeah.
Target.
The Board of Education at the Goshen Central School District will meet today, Wednesday, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, in the District Administration Building for a board workshop to discuss the strategic plan process. Students from the Goshen High School Dixie Lamban, as well as a saxophone quartet, will perform at six forty-five prior to our board meeting on the direction of Kim Longo. Regular board meeting will then begin at seventeen P M. We might preneed to review it. First on tonight's agenda is the board workshop, discussion related to strategic plan process. Turn over documents.
Will come back up on the meet, Mr. Reddick? Your camera is still off, sorry, from what we can see. There we go. All right. So it's my pleasure to welcome Judy Wilson back to meet with our Board of Education this evening. We've had a wonderful opportunity to go through a large-scale stakeholder committee meeting process over two days where we had a large amount of work done relating to goal setting, setting a profile of a learner, coming up with a revised mission statement, of which Judy shepherded us through a two-day process that is now transitioned to action planning, where we have set up two action planning teams to now get into purposeful goals and actionable steps of those pieces that we've spent a lot of time working together with our parents, with our internal stakeholder groups. And I felt it was now important for Judy to visit with the board to be able to give an update on some meeting of work behind the process, the board's actionable steps, if you will, to support the process, and why we're really engaging in this work. So without further ado, Judy, I'm going to turn everything over to you.
Thanks so much, Curtis. And so you meet everyone first. Congratulations. You're in top position, and I'd like to go ahead and ask them, and it would be great to see. And I know we're taking a lot of hard work, but I think there's a little joy and relief in the action of that, of course, with this meeting. I feel like I'm a half-step closer to actually meeting you in person. I had phone calls with several of you in the last row of the room, and had the distinct pleasure of being with thirty of your leaders from across the district, especially with youthful students, staff members, teachers, administrators, and we had very, very productive. And from my viewpoint, such an impressive, very, very, very good student. So thank you for that opportunity also. Thought I would do a recap of the process, just so everyone can track clearly in line, and an overview of the product again, and then just highlight what the board's role is in forward, because it is critical. Strategic plans and goals die without accountability and execution. So want to be sure that we track that clearly in line as you, as the board leaders and the administrative leaders move forward towards this work. And I'm open to any and all questions, and there'll be lots of time for that. So please don't hesitate, whether it's a technical issue or the big picture is a step issue. So just first, let's go back to the why. Why bother with this process? We know you've got talent, you're very talented leaders, you're a co-founder in the business, really happy to work there, but also there's a sense of trust and hope that you can build, and that certainness.
From which you can build. So why bother? You know, things are in good hands. You've got talented people. Just let everybody do what they're going to do. But I think each of us knows from professional experience, as well as personal work in our lives, that goals do matter, goals that have specific action steps to them. And in school systems, we know that high-achieving school systems work hard at building coherence, at really being a system, not just a district or a group of schools, really thinking what it looks like to take our little ones in at pre-K or kindergarten and to work with them and for them for many years in a system that is aligned, that is purposeful, and that uses its resources to really advance top priority work. So the why is pretty clear. Resources are limited, even when budgets pass, of course, and we want to use them really well. We also want to have all employees in the district kind of tethered, is the word I like to use, to the core work of the district, really understanding. You know, in Goshen, unlike the next-door school system, or one across the county, or across the country, in Goshen, for our community at this time, these are the goals that matter most. These are the goals that will have the greatest impact for our children, and they are student-centered goals. You, as a board, have an additional set of goals around facility and finance and policy, but systemically, every employee has a mission. That mission is clear and specific for Goshen, and goals. So the why is strong. The research is very clear around school districts that work hard at coherence, are clear about their goals, and sustain that work over time. We tend to fall into a trap of it's a new school year, there must be new goals, nobody gets traction, there's no proof of growth or evidence of success. We move on to another set of goals. So these are multi-year goals, three to five years. And there was a lot of energy and great consensus building around these goals. So to back up to the process, you or Dr. Coats could have tried to independently, or as a small group, forged goals and rolled them out and announced them to the community and the school district, and they would have very, very little wind in their sails. Ownership is really important here, and inclusivity of voice and ideas is very important also. And so this very good group that met with me over the course of two days really did represent every facet of your community and school district. Again, student voice, it's often the students who set us straight, and again, in Goshen, they did. K to twelve representation across all four of your schools, support staff. You just had very fine people who could think big picture, not just about their particular role in the district, but how the work is connected from one subject area to another, one grade level to another, one child to another. So prior to our two days of work together, I had seventeen one-to-one conversations, some of those with you around the table. We also conducted surveys, and those surveys, you might recall, were, I think, thirteen different surveys tailored for parents by grade level, faculty by grade level, support staff, students grades five and up. And in the process, we collected both objective responses and open-ended responses from over eighteen hundred participants. And it was this group of thirty who had the task of making sense and analyzing the data from those surveys. So with that background and knowing Goshen's basic data, enrollment, attendance, graduation rate, standardized achievement scores, all of those pieces, we spent the first half day learning and discussing what it is that our students need in two thousand twenty-two and beyond, right? Not what they needed five years ago, ten years ago, but what they need going forward. What contemporary learning looks like, what we know from research about the future of work, about the future of education. Then we took a dive into the survey data and spent a lot of time putting these pieces together. What are our students telling us? What are our parents telling us? What are our educators telling us? And what does this data point toward? So it was a very, very full and pretty intense two days with, again, lots of positive energy. And the outcome of that, as Dr. Coats mentioned a few minutes ago, was a restatement of your mission statement, the beginning of really nice work around portrait of a learner. We are using portrait of a learner and not portrait of a graduate, because we're talking about every learner, early childhood through age twenty-one, and the adults as learners also, the educators as lifelong learners also. We talked about what the values are of the district, as well as the points of pride. So I want to emphasize this. There are so many pillars that are strong across your district that people point to with great pride, proud that their children are part of this community, proud that they're working to serve the children of this community. And so this wasn't a deficit model at all. This was very much, we know our strengths. From those strengths, what should we build? What is the next phase of continuum to really achieve at the next level? So portrait of a learner, we left with very strong components for that. A little bit more work to be done. The values that are held dearly across the community, and then, of course, mission statement and two very, very strong goal areas. Some of you are saying, like, where's the specificity in this? So I just want to say that these are the overarching goal areas, which will carry you through the next three to five years of work. The action plans that are being designed right now by teams of educators, board members, parents across the district, those action plans will be before you. They are very specific. Those two teams of volunteers have been asked to think about eighteen-month chunk. Where are the very next steps that can be put into place and acted upon from July of this year, twenty-two, until January of twenty-four? Can we wrap our heads around eighteen months of really solid work? And so, sorry about that. You might have something popping up on the screen in front of me. Did I freeze, Curtis?
No, we still have you.
Okay. So, thanks. So the action steps are very specific. They're written in a format that will name resources needed, timelines, possible barriers, evidence of success, and benchmarks for success. Eighteen months, again, very approachable. People can look at this and think, this is where we dive in, this is what we build upon. You will not see a long list of action steps. You know, if there are four or five attached to each goal, that would be very reasonable. More than that, probably not attainable. We really want to go for early success also. The first couple of months will be about bringing everyone in, bringing everyone in into this work with clarity, understanding why this work was chosen, what it looks like when we're successful, and what it means to our students. And so your two action teams are in the process right now. We've had meetings together. I've been kind of shuffling resources their way, model districts, some suggestions, lots of resources, and those action plans will be fully developed very soon. The two goal areas that are identified were very clear through lines. There is a driving need to be clear and tight about what K-12 alignment looks like in our curriculum for all students, right? This isn't just for some students, you know, not your seventh-grade gifted kids, not just your high school children or your early childhood. This is a set of two goals that apply for every, every child in the district. The importance of children at all ages having voice and choice and being highly engaged in their learning, once there is that K-12 alignment of curriculum and experiences. The second, it ties, they tie together, right? So the first one is about this safe, respectful, engaging students with voice and choice, and the second around the alignment of the K-12 curriculum. Under those two will come two sets of action steps, and again, very specific, measurable, evidence-based. How will we know when we're successful? What will success look like for our children? So that's the timeline, a quick overview of the process. I would like to add, you know, the answer to the question, what's the board's role now? Strategic plans can die quickly. Goals can die quickly. This can't be what some people refer to as, you know, shelf art, or just something to be posted on your website. This is to be kept alive, and principals will have a role in that. Certainly Curtis will guide all this work with Jason and many other leaders across the district. But the board's particular role is to keep this alive at the board level, meaning at least two to three times a year, there will be specific reporting on the progress, events, work being made across the district, being done across the district, attached to each set of action plans. The action plans are measurable. Where are we in those? Is there something that has stopped us from progress? Do we need to regroup? How do we report out to the community? The community communication is critical as well. I think each of these goals will end up with a hashtag, and you have a wonderful communication director. Christina, she will keep this alive in the public as well. Christina, she will keep this alive in the public as well. People will recognize, yes, this is the work, this is the main work, this ties to this goal, what we're being asked to do in co-curricular, what we're being asked to do in mentoring new teachers, the work we do in curriculum development will tie to these goals. So keeping them alive and accountable in really strong ways at the board level in public sessions, two to three times a year, being sure that you're aware of not just the highlights, but also maybe if there are stumbling blocks in the progress over the next three to five years. Accountable as a positive word, right? If we're not accountable to the community and we don't hold the district itself accountable to the goals, they shrivel and die. And it's, again, you know, just a piece of paper. There is a great momentum going into this. The communication plan and how you roll this out across the district when school reopens in August will be very, very important. But it is the board's role, with the superintendent, of course, as part of your team, to ask the questions, you know, is it going to be on our agenda? A little snippet every month with a major report twice a year, you'll choose that format, but it is your way of keeping this alive for the community externally and the community I imagine there are questions, and I'm happy, I think I can see everyone, I'm happy to address anything, as I said, logistically, big picture, whatever you would like. And Curtis, certainly jump in if I missed a beat there.
So Judy, I just want to share one positive point with us. One of our student representatives that sat on our initial planning committee care, Paulino, is also our student board representative, is here with us tonight as well.
Oh, how fabulous. All right, well, I was just reading about the strength of your students and the strength of their voice in this process, so happy to see you.
Nice to meet you.
I just had a question. I know I came a little late, but you talked about the strengths.
Yes.
And about some of the weaknesses that we might need to work on.
Yeah, so certainly many, many points of pride, but I think the, you know, I don't even know if I would say weaknesses, but I have to say the growth points are reflected in these goals. A clear and coherent K-12 curriculum that is articulated, that helps kids transition from one school to the next, that shows vertical and horizontal alignment so that teachers know what is taught and why. That does not mean every teacher teaching the same thing on the same day. It means that we have a very strong understanding of what the components of fourth grade should be, what the components of algebra one should be, and teachers design the best way to get there. But we're very clear about that path and the pathways to graduation. I think that, you know, there were certainly some things to look at that I know your action plan teams will be looking at. At the high school, how much time are children really engaged, highly engaged academically? Or how many study halls? Or how many kids leave school early? You know, that's the type of information that drove some of these recommendations also. How do our students transition from one grade level to the next? Do teachers know really what students are experiencing in the classrooms at the elementary level before they get to the, or the upper intermediate level, before they get to the middle school level? We certainly were very clear about the wellness of our children, right? Not just in these last two years, but how well are our children? And I know that's a major topic in your community and at your board table, and so you'll see that ring loudly, I think, through the work of the first goal and the second goal, you know, that helping each child succeed with a strong sense of personal wellness and helping children succeed in a safe, respectful, and engaging school.
Judy, to take further, one of the other points that you highlighted earlier as well, the difference between a strategic goal and a board goal and objective rang true in many of the topics that we saw. There were concerns about nutrition, which we're addressing with the Wellness Committee. There were certainly concern about technology. We have an updated technology plan this year, but just to go back to separate some of the things that can be affected through policy of the Board of Education, but then on the practice side of teaching and learning, as a group too, we really sewed that into the right places, if you will.
And very, very important strands. I think that your budget tells a story every year. Your budget can now be aligned to these goals. There's a narrative in your budget. How are we advancing these goals with the resources that we have at hand? How are we using our resources, whether that's our technology and our facilities or whether that's our actual dollars for programs, professional learning, resources for students? But, you know, every budget tells a story. Is it aligned to goals?
I just ask, when do we anticipate the action plans getting rolled out?
They're working on those now, and I would expect, Curtis might want to hit me for this, I would expect you'll see them in July.
Yeah, I think once the school year is finished, and they have a few more times to meet after students are done, then I would say mid to late July, they absolutely should be done.
Sure. And that would be perfect timing to launch, you know, your new work of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
And one of the other pieces that I just think it's important to highlight, and especially with one of our students here, and the students, I think, articulated it best, as we watch the state contemplate what assessment should look like.
Yes.
This whole concept of student voice and choice. If we now are able to consider graduation pathways rather than, you have to take this region's exam and this course, and that, where we can then contemplate a humanities pathway, a tech pathway, a STEAM pathway, students will have greater voice and choice. But we had a lot of very deep conversation also, what does that look like in the elementary school? And again, all credit to our students, they really brought a nice perspective to the conversation during that on their frustrations and their desire to be part of their own learning. They understand their role and responsibilities. However, for them to be successful of higher education as something that they are considering after high school, what a better place for them to have choice as they find their way, especially through middle school, but definitely by the time they reach high school.
And we did spend quite a bit of time looking at the research and looking at what we know in twenty twenty-two about the future of work, the needs for students to be collaborative, for students to be empathetic, right, for students to be critical thinkers. Now, these are the driving forces that will propel much of the work that our students will do in their lifetimes. And so that shift has to start, right? We need to see that in kindergarten, we need to see that in third grade, all the way through. We need to understand as educators, what does that look like in a classroom? No, it doesn't mean giving up control. It means having clear goals, designing lessons that give students agency in their learning. And so you, and you already have solid foundations for some of your pathways work, and I think that's ripe for future work, and certainly, as Curtis said, to align with what we know will be changes in how children are assessed, whether through the New York State Assessment or other assessments.
So my question is walk me through or guide me on how the new strategic plan and goals that we're going to have and action plans. And when the board reconvenes at their reorg meeting for board goals and objectives, are they going to be married pretty much together at this point?
Yes. So these goals are, these include everyone, right? Board, all educators, all employees, all students and families in the district. These are the district strategic goals. A big warning here, don't pile on, like, this is it, this is what you will build from for the next years. A board of education has additional goals that apply to the board, right? When you think about this, it's like, how does the board behave? How does it act? How does it make decisions? How does it communicate? Policy is the board's business, and you probably have goals around policy development that needs to be attended to in the next year or two. Facilities, and we know that tied to your propositions last night also, and personnel in terms of who's there, how they're evaluated, and your relationship with the superintendent and evaluation of the superintendent. So board goals are in addition to these, and they really impact the work of the board. More board goals that affect student achievement or professional development or wellness work for children, whatever it might be, that's in the hands of everyone in your employ. And it's in great hands, and they're going to attend to it through these goals and action plans. So a big danger would be to add anything or to pile on. This is a big body of important work.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, we're not going to double up on you.
No, no, it's how things die.
Yeah, exactly.
So just to give an indicator too of transition into the new strategic planning process, we will have an updated guidance plan to present to the board by the next meeting, a technology plan. The Wellness Committee will probably be done sometime in July. The facilities project is through. We, the board, together with administration, will have to go back to our facilities policy that we started some good work on, but we'll have to look critically. You know, I know the food service program has been a topic of concern. How can board policy affect some of the changes perhaps that we want to make in terms of nutrition for students in the district? Those are really important board goals that I think need to carry into next year. The food service program is struggling. How do we look deeply at the policy that could potentially positively affect nutrition and the impression of services to students while making sure that every student still has access?
It's a great example, and that's clearly board business, right? That is the charge of the board.
So Judy, I wanted to say thank you for being with us tonight. This was a great, great update on where things stand, and we look forward to working together to continue the process.
Well, any way that I can support the good work, I just, I just want to reiterate, I can't say this everywhere I work, so please take this very seriously. There's talent, there's goodwill, there's energy around this, people are hopeful, they're ready to work and look forward, so, you know, capitalize on this, and I know great things will come of it.
Judy, thank you again so much. Thank you for being with us.
Thanks, have a great evening, enjoy the music.
All right.
Take care. Take care.
I'd like to introduce students from our Goshen High School Dixieland Band.
Yes.
And a saxophone quartet.
Yes.
Under the direction of Kim Longo.
Yes.
On behalf of the Board of Education, we welcome you. We thank you for coming down. The board volunteers many hours that are pretty boring, so this is great to see you. I will turn it over to you and let me get out of line.
Okay, well, we'll try to liven it up a little for you.
Here we go.
I have one more song for you. Change around to a different group. That was the Dixieland Band and now I have a saxophone quartet. And by the way, if you like any of this music, you should come next Wednesday night to the Festival of the Arts. Because in the gym at the high school, we will have a bunch of artwork out for display from all of the art teachers and, and technology and all sorts of things like that. But we will also have live music and some of these groups are going to perform as well with some other songs. As well as some string players and some vocalists. So next Wednesday from six to eight up in the high school gym. Thank you for having us here tonight. It was great to be out again. This is our first outing. All right, clap it up guys. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're live.
Want to read this again? In regard to regular meeting of Board of Education, the next meeting is the Wednesday, May 18th, 2022. Being held in the District Administration Building in Washington, D.C. Next on the agenda is the executive session, but I'm going to move the privilege of the floor five, so you guys can leave if you want to. Next on the agenda is the exec session, but I'm going to move the privilege of the floor five, so you guys can leave if you want to. First up is Jennifer Allen.
Hello, everyone. I, I sent an email to all of you. I don't know if you had the opportunity to take a look at it, but it was in regard to concerns of the region's exams. And their value of being 10% towards their quarter four grades. And I'm just asking to, you know, revisit that and see if the possibility, if we can go with a do no harm policy. So that those grades do not affect negatively the grades of the students and I think it's detrimental to be aware that, you know, the effects of COVID still have affected their educational year. Between teachers being out, students being out, extended quarantines multiple times, not having certain, a math teacher for the first three weeks of school. There have been many situations that have created a deficit in their learning and and there's a strong possibility that they may not be prepared for these tests to come. And local districts are choosing not to include those grades in their quarter four overall average. And so I'm just urging everyone to give that some thought so that these kids could end the year without that added stressor to them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I think we'll impact it in time there. Thank you for your comments and sharing that with us. Next, Rebecca Allen.
Thank you. I'm Beth Tyrell. I teach at the Goshen Intermediate School. I just wrote some notes, some notes for myself or I will forget completely what I want to say. So I just wanted to speak briefly in support of our principal, Dr. Matt Wentworth. I've written to you all, but I just wanted to touch base in person. He has led us through good times and also some very challenging times through a pandemic daunting for any administrator, but especially for a relatively new principal. And he's led us very well through those times. His first priority through that and through any time has always been the students' wellbeing. He's always put that first in every decision he has made. A close second would be the wellbeing of the faculty and staff under his care. And I've been very impressed by the job he's been doing. The word that I would use to describe him most is supportive. I've spoken to him many times over, over many, many issues involving many people and he truly has been very supportive. I've been truly impressed by that. This is his tenure year and I, I am urging the board to grant him tenure. He is a true asset to the Goshen Intermediate School and to the Goshen School District. He's an incredible leader. And if you do that, grant him tenure, that will allow him to continue that leadership and that wonderful presence in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We do appreciate that. That concludes our privilege of the floor. Next on the agenda is the executive session and the motion. Tom and Al. Be resolved, Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent to reconvene the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to the employment history of a particular person. All clear. All clear?
Make the motion to exit the conference session and come back into the regular meeting. Shannon, Allison, all of them. Next on the agenda is the President's Report on behalf of the organization. We thank the community for supporting the budget we presented. And we welcome our new incoming board members, Brent Whedon here tonight. Congratulations. And Cal Mottis hopefully watching, congratulations. Prior to the meeting, we did a strategic plan review update with Judy Wilson. District administration team and administrators and team are working on the action plans. I think the update there will be sometime in July or probably in August. We need it probably in August if we don't leave it. So look forward to that. We welcome care. Good to see you again. And that wraps up my report. Next on the agenda is legislative update. Shannon Nelson.
I don't have too much tonight. At the last meeting on May 4th, there was a discussion about the student employer data and how that's being used with state ed for college courses. And really the issue being that there's a lack of faculty teachers and business officials and what they're doing to try to be solution oriented. Because I guess a lot of districts are struggling with that. A lot of the other districts discussed the concerns similar to what we had regarding the uptick in vaping and fights in schools. Everyone talked about increasing hall monitors, monitoring bathrooms. Pretty much all the districts are struggling in the same areas that we are. But when listening to the strategies we're doing, it was helpful to hear that we're implementing all the things that other districts are doing and even more so. And everyone using ADAP, of course, too. So that's about, that's about it.
Are you correct on that, Shannon?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on agenda is the superintendent's report at post.
Thank you, sir. So as I shared with the board previously, we were anticipating that all families would move to, back to full pay or reduce pay for free reduced lunch. We learned this past week that the state of New York actually has made a new waiver for the 2022-23 school year to the United States Department of Agriculture for free lunches. I will insert with hesitancy my own skepticism that with the rate of inflation what it is right now and with supply chain issues, I don't know that this waiver will be approved. And I think our course of action will still be to proceed for the rest of the year to inform families on my school box that lunches will be full pay and pair in that fashion and then be relieved, if you will, that if it goes through the application from the state that again, school lunches could be free for next year. One of the things that we'll have to watch very carefully is revenue into the program. We've been trying to get solvency back into the program. The school lunch program, as everyone remembers, is a self-funded program. It has taken a massive hit and that is not a goat issue. That's every school district issue that has a school lunch program. Programs have just been decimated from any fund balance that they had. Obviously, full pay was a guaranteed straight revenue, which has really helped the program to get back on its feet. However, that money has to dry up and come to an end at some point. So again, the state has made the application to the USDA. I don't know that it's going to go through, but we will leave it as something that we'll watch very closely and again, come back to it if the application is approved. Second item, part of our, one of our board goals and objectives for this year was a review and update of our guidance plan. We have had two meetings, one of which was a presentation by a college and career counselor on what they are seeing in the marketplace. And the other meeting was really focused on using a rubric to analyze our current plan. One of the common themes that came up was how do we measure effectiveness of the plan? We have our, we have our feelings and we know what we think about the plan, but how do we truly use a rubric to measure effectiveness of the plan? And the group had some really good conversation on that. From parent surveys to student feedback to administrator teacher feedback. And we're looking for ways that as we make these changes, to ensure that we have the ability to measure the effectiveness of those changes moving forward. One of the positive pieces is now we can look at this as a K-12 continuum. We've had conversations about the use of novants in the middle school so that we can start early with college and career planning. The group is down very deep. Our next meeting is going to go back and look specifically at some of the data that was presented by our college and career counselor last week so that we can focus on, okay, what are parents and families saying about the college and career process and almost use it as a backwards design model? What do we have to put into our plan to ensure that we are providing a better opportunity for our counselors and our teachers to better prepare students, not just for college? College is absolutely the highest goal that we want our students to have and families to have to pass their desire. However, we need to focus on vocations. We need to focus on the workplace. We need to focus on opportunities for access to the military at the same time. And that has been a part of our conversation. Again, the group is staying focused on the goal that we want to make sure that we can have a plan ready to present on June 13th, 14th. Final update is both the legislature and the governor have now signed off on a APPR score waiver for the 21-22 school year. I found it interesting that this waiver went through considering that they implemented create tests and region tests. Almost every APPR plan around the state is tied to student testing data. Now, that being said, we don't know what the data is going to look like. I would anticipate this is likely the last year the state would be eligible for this waiver. Keep in mind, that does not negate the responsibility to evaluate. So by the end of this year, all of our teachers, all of our principals will have been evaluated. What it puts a stop on is Mr. Carter and I at the end of the year do not need to send scores to New York State. All of that data gets warehoused in-house. Any rubric that was evaluated based on the teacher evaluation or a principal evaluation, obviously all of that data stays here, but for accountability purposes, those score stuff, we don't go any further with that until the APPR resets, if you will, after July 1st, school resumes and the new school begins.
Has it been like five years? How many years has APPR avoided COVID?
Three, three years. Since the beginning of the pandemic. I, again, I found it very curious that they did grant the waiver again this year. Again, don't forget that waiver is partially related to the relationship with Washington, D.C. because these plans need to be submitted to the federal government through the state. So that leniency needed to come from there first, but that didn't necessarily mean that the state had to go ahead and give the up for those waivers. On the positive side, we heard tonight from families that there were still concerns about extended quarantine, about lack of access. And one of the things that if you do your research and really look into school districts around the state, there were rural school districts upstate that did not come back from remote destruction until the midpoint of this year. Many of them were still on remote up until about December or January of this year. So when they look at the concept and the lens of equity that we have to distribute this evenly throughout the state, I understand it from, from that perspective. There were other parts of the state that were able to return much sooner, but if you watched COVID data and you looked at the thing related to region, they were more deeply affected than we were, giving us an opportunity perhaps to have access to in-person instruction, which was the desire for everyone much sooner.
That's it for me, sir. Can I throw two quick holes or anything?
Most certainly.
Things pop in my head, man. I scroll a lot, so. Have the community passed capital project? What's our next step today or timeline?
So I actually met with Lan this morning with Mr. Fries and have begun the process of making the concept now become a project. One of the long conversations that we had, when we began this conversation, lead time and equipment was eight to 16 weeks. It's now six months. So what Lan and Gerard will be doing is accelerating the design phase. We are looking, and I've already vetted this with legal, we are looking into the possibility instead, instead of putting the whole project out to competitive bid, there are mini bid lists, they're called the omnia list, that have already been cleared by the state for competitive bidding. So let's assume by August 1st, Gerard can say this is the equipment that will be appropriate for the project. And Scott, Sam, we will go ahead and buy that equipment. The competitive bid piece then comes on the labor behind that. So what will happen is we'll have the equipment on order, let's say, six months from there, this is into the beginning of the new year. Then the project goes to state ed. Then the project goes to the state education department for formal approval. Once we have approval, then the bid gets written around the labor saying, okay, this is, this is the equipment we have to install. We need you to, to give us your bid saying, we want this to be installed in our building, rather than you go out and get the equipment that we want you to put in the building. That labor, labor costs, the way it was explained this morning, will come a little bit different in the fact that they no longer have a contingency, because everything's already been purchased for them and they know the conditions that they're walking into in the buildings. But I think that still keeps us on our timeline because we have to keep in mind, there was a piece that came through this morning, I think it was that ARP money got pushed out one year, but anything that's connected to ESSR, that still has a timeline of 2023. So we have a timeliness issue here that we, we need to make sure that we extend these funds to be able to get to work. So we got relief on, I think it was it, BARP we saw this morning? It was only one year, it's 24. But we got some relief, but we want to make sure that we're still moving forward to get the work done.
Okay, thank you. And then, progress? How are we?
Every time we hire, every, every time we hire one or two, we lose two or three. So, so we're, we're making progress, but inevitably, we still have a shortage. We are dealing with time to keep up to take extended leave. We dealt with the issue that a week ago, we had to cover almost 16 months. And that's requiring us to combine routes, that's requiring us to have our director or assistant director mechanic drive on certain days. It's still a challenge. I will, because you give me the opportunity, applaud those that have been here for a long time. There are many drivers that will come in from their own group and say, what do you need me to do? And they're back out on the road again. So the department is really coming together and know it's a challenge for families and know they're frustrated, unless we all want to go get our CDL and start driving buses in the morning. It's, it's going to continue to be a challenge. The market, if you watch any other trends in terms of drivers, the market continues to struggle.
Is that carrying over to, going to be staffing across the board or?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Thank you for that thing. Sure. Any questions? Next on the agenda is Assistant Superintendent Kirkland, Instruction Personnel and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. Pucci. Good evening, everyone. Just a quick update on the wellness committee. We did have our first meeting on May 10th here in the board room. We had some great conversation. More importantly, we had the opportunity to review the current plan. We did utilize the New York State Wellness Policy Assessment Tool, a sex check-in for compliance, and then moved on to potential strengths and weaknesses noted within the current plan. We also took the opportunity to review, I would say, eight to nine other plans from around the county and also in Western Central Rockland. You know, once again, looking for strengths and weaknesses within those plans and some of the more notable pieces that were outlined in those plans. Our next meeting will be on May 24th in this room. Once again, we'll continue the review process. However, I don't believe we'll spend much more time reviewing. It's now time to move into the revision phase of the current plan. I would say it was well attended and hopefully we can provide a finished product as we enter the line. Just wanted to mention junior high, Al County. The music festival was held on Saturday, May 7th. It was at Valley Central High School, the Goshen Central School District. It was very fortunate, we're very talented here. As you know, we had 24 students between grade seven and nine accepted this year, which I think is a wonderful number, a great representation of our program, our community. Just wanted to say congratulations to our students. And as you know, it's really due in large part to the support of the community and also the hard work of our entire music department. So thank you to the music department and our entire team that helped 24 of our students fall. And the doctor quotes had mentioned some of the APPR and we did have a little bit of discussion about regions, so we can handle that until next time when we have more information to provide. And that will be it for me this evening.
If there's anything else, I'm probably. Is there a way for us, the approach to busy time of year, activities, do you have a calendar?
Having the kind of buildings I've been putting on the online workout, vacuuming people's mind.
That's what I know of. Online board calendar.
The Google Calendar, I haven't created, I shared before.
Six months ago, seven months ago.
I have to open it, I have. I still got a file, I think, yeah?
I can ask them if they, they're holding it in door written.
I mean, you can send us a little reminder, access. I think I've got questions to go yet. Who do we have talking today? Do you want to tell your? Yeah. Okay, so.
Get to it.
Next up. Next on the agenda is the front end report. Shannon, Allison. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools, the board education approves the consent agenda, asks you to send all there. There is no old business, so move to new business 11.1, except results of the annual election and the vote on May 17, 2022. Shannon and Mike. Be resolved, the board education accepts the results of the annual board's member election and budget vote held on May 17, 2022, and approves a minute of said meeting. All there. 11.2, approve minutes, can we record the meeting? May 3rd, 2022. Tom, Shannon. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools, board education approves a minute for May 3rd, 2022 public hearing on the 2022-23 budget and regular board meetings. All there. 11.3, I need a motion for approved agreement for services. Manhattan Psychology, Allison, Hillary. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools, board education approves entering into agreement for services with Dr. Chelsea Rosen, Manhattan Psychology Group PC, to provide consultation services to a special education student affected for the 2022-23 school year as follows. $500 per hour rate up to the required hours of the student's INP, $3,000 daily rate, 8:00 through 4:00 p.m., $2,000 half daily rate, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Be further resolved, the board education authorized the superintendent to execute the business. All there. 11.4, approve, new motion to approve agreement for special education services, Hudson River Neuropsychology, Allison, Tom. Be resolved, the board education enters into agreement with Dr. Terry Copans from Hudson River Neuropsychology to conduct neuropsychological evaluation for the Goshen Central School District for the 2022-23 school year as follows. Each assessment, $2,950, and on complex evaluations involving extensive record review, $225. And on autism screening, $100. And on educational assessment, K through grade two, $500. And on educational assessment, grade three and up, $750. Additional other in-office services, $250 an hour. Additional out-of-office services, $250 to $300 per hour. Be further resolved, the board education authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute the business. All there. 11.5, have a donation from the Goshen High School Boys Basketball Program, motion, Shannon, George. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools, board education accepted donation of $600 from the Goshen High School Boys Basketball Program, the purpose of defraying the cost of busing to the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Regionals in Johnson City on March 10, 2022. All there. Good news for everybody here, 11.6, we're making the new motions revise in 21-22 student calendar by adding an extra day off.
So when we originally counted on this, one of the snow days, one of the days that we closed the district, actually during the school closing week, it snowed while school was not in session, that was completely an oversight. My part, when it happened, we moved back, we had counted the days numerous times and we did have excess one day, which contractually, if we don't close, we're obligated to pay our employees, which is the reason we're requesting that we change the calendar. More to talk to.
Thank you for that. And the motion, Tom, Allison. Be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent schools, board education approves a district-wide closing on May 27, 2022 to adjust the student calendar. This adjustment is necessary because one additional scheduled snow day has not been used and must be subtracted from the calendar. All there. Anyone on the board? Or members here, do you want to report?
Has there been any update about the parents who was there, deposit money from the vehicle or is there anything?
Yeah, we talked about this, okay, you don't remember anything? There's, there's two options really before the board, I guess, the right comment. So I had an extensive conversation both with Beth Harris and with Lori Panzer, who was the coordinator for this trip. There's two options before the board. Legal has authorized that the board can make a determination if they so choose to make a payment in lieu of any fees that may have been related to the postponement of this trip. Legally, the board can authorize that payment. However, Ms. Panzer has worked with the company extensively at a second option that would address the same issue. If the board were to authorize one, and I know the board's perspective on travel, would authorize one last trip for those that were signed up to go on this trip to Western Europe, obviously away from where the conflict area is. This one in particular is in Barcelona, Spain. Once we committed to that trip, there's 18 people that have part of the postponement, if you will, that would still potentially be interested. If we could guarantee the company 25 students would attend that trip, they would immediately make whole those people that would be subject to any of the reductions that they saw. So the $700 payment that the board was spoken to, they would immediately give that back. They wouldn't wait till we filled the seats. They would do it, they would say immediately, okay, we're giving it back, but it's your obligation to guarantee us those 25 students. I've had extensive conversations with Ms. Panzer about how she feels about that. Automatically, she had four people already that she had spoken with that said they would be interested to go. I don't think it would be an issue to fill those seats. Those are really the two options. The new seven, if you will, that would come in, obviously would, would be responsible for whatever the cost of the trip is, but that would make whole those that unfortunately did not have the ability to go as a result of either pandemic, but the event in conflict.
They would be made whole. Other than insurance costs, I mean.
If, can we have that?
All right. So basically, grandpa, except for the 71 people.
Correct.
Even seniors that wouldn't be going on that trip?
They, so they get the, essentially, they get the money back. We, so basically what they're saying is they need a commitment for the trip. They will not wait, they won't say, we'll do one for one, so once you get 18, once you get 19, once you get 20, we'll start refunding these people in essence.
Who are responsible?
We are. But I, again, I'm speculating, I don't see that as much. I think there is. So those are the two options, that's important.
We want May 27 to tell them what?
February. Thanks.
You got seven people, right?
What's the typical size that should bring to that?
25. I think they've had 23, they've had a size 26, but that fits right around the average of people. The sooner the better, so that. Well, the sooner that you decide, the sooner that the people that are concerned about the waiver.
So let's say we do ensure, well, you guys can't do this decision, how are you going to make sure that seniors are aware of that? Because like I always said, the issue, it's like this new stuff, they're concerned about, like not being a fault.
So I know Mrs. Panzer is waiting on a decision from the board and then she would communicate that with those seniors and families that would be affected. You just got this, I don't think it's, despite, I don't think it's going to hurt to wait till the meeting.
As I was saying, we got June 13?
Yeah.
All there, awesome. Thank you. Other? Any other board members here, do you want to report? Any motion to go into executive session room? Shannon and Tom. Be resolved, the board education will enter into executive session with the intent not to engage in a business portion of the meeting for discussions related to employment of a particular person or persons.